I'll call to order the fourth meeting and American City Council meeting in regular session on January 27, 2014. Please note if you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign the speaker list provided on the table at the side of the council chamber. President has the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for each agenda item. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak for each agenda item. We will have the invocation led by Reverend Warren Litchfield, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Mugg.
And then when they get up to do the... Join me in a moment of prayer. Almighty God, we God at this evening hour, to conduct the business of this city, we offer our prayer for a mayor, for the president, for the members of the city council, and for all in authority, grant unto them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duties in behalf of all our people. We commend this city, county, and station, and nation to their merciful care, and being guided by thy divine prominence, we may to all secure in thy peace. We especially commend your gracious care in keeping all the men and women of our armed forces at home and abroad, our law enforcement community in fine rescue. Defend them day by day with your heavenly grace, strengthen them in their trials and temptations, give them courage to face a peril or reset them, and grant to each a sense of your bodying presence wherever they may be. Remember those upon a bed of affliction; comfort those who mourn; in thy name we pray. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rouse, please call the roll.
Ms. McCrary?
Here.
Mr. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Lez?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
President Smalls?
Here.
Mayor Mugg.
We're going to shift the agenda around just a little bit, and we'll go to Agenda Item Eight, the Laurel Town Center. Mr. Gibbons, or... And just to let you know before you start, we'll waive the two-minute rule.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name's Tom Fitzpatrick. On behalf of Brian Gibbons, who's not able to be with us here tonight, and our company, Greenberg Gibbons, I am very happy to be here. Three years ago this month, our firm became involved with operating the old Laurel Mall. And I'm here to stand before you 60 days before the reopening of our first phase of the new Laurel Town Center, and present to you today some new announcements about our leasing progress. We are now currently 60 days from opening our first phase. Let's see. We are approximately 90, 95 percent complete on our Phase One. Phase One will include... I'm probably not going to do this right, but there we go. Phase One is going to include the reopening of the Burlington Coat Factory, a brand-new 70,000-square-foot store.
Tom, Kevin, can we open this up so that it's not as young as I used to be? We're going to open it up a little bit before you vote.
Did I hit the wrong button?
No.
There we go.
Thank you.
So as I was saying, Phase One will open March 28 with the reopening of Burlington Coat Factory. I think people have seen, the lights have gone on out in the parking lot. Burlington Coat Factory will begin merchandising on or about March 1. They'll have a soft opening that week of March 24 and open to the public March 28. Phase One will be pretty much the north side of Main Street, so the access off of Route One will be complete. People will be able to drive through the project, through Main Street. Parking deck in the back will be open, and everything to the north side will be open. The rest of Main Street will be under construction, and we'll be delivering several other pads and several new stores that I'll be announcing this evening. As you all know, we also have announced previously to tonight, the Harris Teeter is under construction. They will lead our Phase Two opening and the real completion on September 14 later this year. Sports Authority is under construction as well here, and Regal Cinema in the back is the other anchor store that we've announced. Today, I'm pleased to announce that we are now 85 percent leased, and we'll announce today 14 new stores opening with us in our Phase Two. So Phase One will be Burlington, followed by Harris Teeter in September, and the rest of Main Street. The first restaurant we're announcing tonight is BJ's Brew House and Restaurant. It's a concept out of the West Coast, basically serving handcrafted beers and American cuisine. We're very excited to have BJ's join us here. Next to them is Outback Steakhouse in a pad location here. Old Navy will be joining our fashion lineup in approximately 15,000 square feet here. Panera Bread, Mayor, you told me we had to get a Panera, we got a Panera, coming right here with a drive-thru right on Route One. That will probably open early summer. They may precede the opening of the Harris Teeter. And the timing of all of Phase Two opening is going to have to depend on the rest of the tenant construction and whatnot, but we feel comfortable that everybody will be open by September. And then Party City adjacent to Burlington Coat, they will open later this summer. Noodles anchoring our main building here off of Route One. Downtown Locker Room, sporting goods store here. Kay Jewelers, a great national specialty jewelry retailer here. Subway, probably open early and feed all the construction workers are there. And then two new fast casual concepts, Burger-Five, which is a gourmet burger operation, and Blaze Pizza will be back here anchoring the west end of Main Street. And then we have a medical facility, Urgent Express Urgent Care on our building here on Route One. And then Massage Envy, take care of all those workers when they're done here on the edge of Main Street. And then Tutti Frutti is our yogurt provider that'll be located back here towards Main Street. So we're very excited. It was hard to believe it was August 14, 2012, when we had our groundbreaking, and we're very excited to be here today announcing the amount of progress in leasing has been extraordinary. I think it's a compliment to the town of Laurel. It deserves something like this for a long time, and we're very happy and pleased to be here tonight introducing you to the rest of the Laurel Town Center, which will open in just 60 days. Hard to believe. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions people may have. We've released a press release, and in front of you, you do have copies of everything that we've shared with you tonight.
Questions, Mayor?
Tom, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming this evening, and we look forward to your next announcement of other stores. So let me just keep pushing you a little bit. But we appreciate all the work that Greenberg Gibbons has done. I know that this project has been on the minds of many for a long time, many years. I think when Greenberg Gibbons came in, they said they were going to do something with that property, and they've done it. Is it everything everybody wants? Probably not, but it's a piece of real estate that we've always said that's very important to the city. And with that said, I think it's important for us to recognize that Harris Teeter, this is the first Harris Teeter city of Laurel and in Prince George's County. So we're excited about that. The BJ's Brew House, again, first in Laurel, first in the state of Maryland, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
So I think those are important things to point out. I also think it's important for people to see the reach that Greenberg Gibbons has. And I know that the big conventions are coming up, you're still out there working this property, and I just wanted to point those out. I'm very happy with what I see and the progress, and this has been a very tough project to get started. And, you know, everything started going south, and then some issues with the developer, and then Greenberg Gibbons stepped in and really made it happen, and I really do appreciate that. And thank you for coming tonight to update us on the first round here. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Tom. You have come?
Tom, you may have come back.
Tom, if you'll just come back. Counsel, I'll open it up for questions. I'll start with Councilman Ricks.
I am very, very excited for all of this, and as you know, no matter where we go in the city and what kind of an environment we're in, and the conversation always turns to the Town Center at Laurel. I'm just to ask you just a couple of questions because they're going to ask me. The Brew House, is that... Can you explain what kind of an operation that is? Is it like a sports type of an operation?
It will have a sports theme to it, but it has a very strong presence with craft beers, and it would probably have about over 100 different types of beer selections. They've got a great pizza selection. It's a very well-known national brand, and if they go on the website, I think they'll be very pleased with the types of menu that they would offer. Very high volume, I think they'll do a great job here. And as the mayor said, it's new to the market, so I think it's unique and it's different, and I think that's something that we try to bring to our merchandising mix.
Do you happen to know what the square footage of the pad would be?
The building itself will be approximately 7,500 square feet.
And what about Harris... Not Harris Teeter, but the Outback Steakhouse, you know about that?
It's approximately 6,200 feet.
6,200. Thank you very much, and again, I look forward to hearing from you again.
Counsel, any other questions, comments? Councilman Lez?
Yeah, let me just... I think it bears repeating. This will be a 12-screen theater.
That's correct.
About 2,000 seats, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I think we also need to note that we're going to sort of straighten out the south entrance into the Town Center at Laurel, because it's going to... Now you'll be able to come out of Laurel Lakes and make a left turn.
Yeah, this traffic signal here will be complete with our opening of Phase Two, so later this summer, this whole intersection will change, and the access into the project will significantly improve off of Cherry Lane there.
And I assume, Tom, that'll be sequenced with the one at Route One, correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. That is my question, Mr. President.
Councilwoman McCrary?
Just one, and I may have missed it. Did we have a target date for the opening on Regal?
Regal would probably be November 14.
Great job. Thank you.
Councilwoman Nicholas?
I just want to say thank you. I'm very excited about this. Thank you.
Tom, I do have one question. With this project, can you tell us in phases, jobs? Obviously, this is going to bring a number of jobs to this community. Can you just give us some idea of the number of jobs?
While we're under construction, the construction phase alone probably generated almost 1,000 construction jobs. And then once we're complete, I would think we'll probably be in the 1,500 new jobs, permanent jobs, between all the restaurants and the retailers. And it represents close to $110 million investment.
That's excellent for the city.
Mr. Smalls, follow-up, please. If someone is interested in applying for a job, are there going to be different people that they contact, or is there going to be one location where they're going to all accumulate?
Our marketing team is... Has in the past at some of our other openings, we haven't determined whether we're going to do it here or not, have done job fairs. So we're going to contact some of the retailers and see if we can put one of those together here. If not, we'll post something both on our Facebook as well. The project will have a Facebook page, as well as our website will have information regarding Laurel. So between that and a press announcement, once we figure out exactly what we're going to do from a job fair standpoint, that's how we'll communicate it.
Well, I, for one, would encourage you to do a job fair. I think not only the people coming to apply for jobs, but the publicity that you all will get from that being somewhere at a certain location at a certain time would speak volumes for what the city's doing here.
No, I think that's a great suggestion, and we probably would do it sometime later this summer in timing for our Phase Two, when the majority of the rest of the retailers and restaurants will be opening.
Thank you, sir.
I was just going to say, we have touched base, and I know some members of your team have as well. The state of Maryland has the regional office over at what I still call the Arbitron Building for employment, and I know we had set up some meetings internally here with them and with your team and others, so there'll be possibilities there as well.
Yeah, we will have our operations and full asset management team in place starting March 1. So we'll be out with our new operations manager and asset manager to introduce him to all the folks at the city, because we'll be open and operating literally 60 days from today. Hard to believe.
Tom, I have just one final question. If you would just tell us at the area, green area at Fourth and Cherry, what the plan is for that area that's presently green as that Phase Two?
This has been identified as a multifamily residential development opportunity. We are in the process of still marketing it to some of the other multifamily developers. We would basically sell the land to the multifamily developer, and they would develop somewhere in the 300-unit apartment complex is what's been currently designed for that, that I've seen. So we're hopeful that potentially later, first quarter, maybe second quarter of this year, we might be in a position to announce a completion of a deal with a residential developer.
Okay. Thank you. We really appreciate all the work that's going into this project, and as I've said many, many times before, this Town Center project has captured the attention of young and old. It's crossed all demographics here in the city, so everyone's really excited about this Town Center.
Well, we're very pleased to be part of Laurel. Thank you.
We'll now move to Agenda... Oh, we do have a couple of people signed up, I'm sorry. First to speak on this agenda item is Bob DiPietro.
Yes, Mr. President.
Tom Fitzpatrick.
Tom.
Tom, I'm sorry.
Jeez.
Okay. Now, we'll move to the rest of our agenda. Agenda Five is approval of minutes of the third meeting of January 13, 2014. Counsel, I assume you've had an opportunity 2013, 2014 yet?
Move to approve.
Did I hear a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second. Go ahead. Think on it.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Great. Okay. Ms. Rouse, please call the roll.
Ms. McCrary?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes. We're going to take about a 10, 15-minute break for those who may want to leave, and we'll reconvene at about 7:35.
If you want to have a chance to talk to Mr. Fitzpatrick or anyone on his team for more specifics, please do so.
...to Barbara Selner Webb to discuss upcoming Patuxent River Commission meetings and concerns. We have two Boy Scouts with us tonight working on their citizenship in the community and their communications merit badges, Ted McWhitney and Philip McWhitney. Stand up. So I'll ask what I usually ask, does anybody want to say anything? And of course, they're going to shake their heads. No. Well, thank you for coming, and again, I gave you my card. You call Ms. Rouse in a couple of weeks, and she'll send you the minutes of this meeting. Thank you for coming. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Lez. Councilwoman McCrary?
Thank you, Mr. President. An update on the library, which has a projected target date of February 18 to open in the rented space behind this building at 8101 Sandy Spring. I believe it'll be closed for two or three weeks, although the drop boxes will still be open. This Saturday, we're going to have bagels with the council, starting at 9 o'clock at the DiPietro Center. Love to have people come out and join us. And this past Saturday, I attended the MML Board Meeting in Annapolis for planning for this year's events. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCrary. Councilman Ricks?
I'd like to, on behalf of the council and the mayor, send out wishes to Mark Sly, who is Sly's barber shop right here on Montgomery Street. Mark has become ill, and so our prayers and thoughts go out to him and his family. Thank you.
Councilwoman Nicholas?
I have nothing to report.
I have a couple of announcements. First of all, the Laurel Fire Department recently held their election of new officers, and I'll extend congratulations to the new fire chief, D.J. Hall, deputy chief, Darren Grant, assistant chiefs Travis Percy and Kevin Brown. So those are among the leadership of our new fire department. On Wednesday, February 12, the county executive and members of his staff will hold a public budget hearing at Laurel High School. So anyone who's interested in speaking at that meeting or just attending to hear what the county executive has prepared for his budget, please turn out. I had the opportunity to attend the Sing for King concert at Laurel High School. Dr. Max Statham, who unfortunately passed away about a year ago, this was the first concert without him, but it was very well done, and it's something that I hope that we here at the city and others will help keep going. That's my report. Mayor Mugg?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me give condolences to Pete Parenter Family, our director of communications, who lost his father, as well as Get Well wishes from Calvin Parks, who's owner of emergency services, and Carl Brendel, who is out of service for a couple of weeks, and I've gone ahead and appointed Jack Brock as the acting director, and I want to thank Jack for taking that on. And I also give congratulations to Pete Parenter on the birth of his granddaughter. So you heard that Martin Luther King Day, Jr., we had the Sing for King, well-attended event, and you heard about Dr. Mac, and the city is very happy to be a co-sponsor of that program and look forward to working with them on next year's planning. As well as the Peace Pole Outfront, the city employees on Friday, the 17th, did place a reef in front of the municipal center here, and I want to again thank our employees for continuing that tradition. The January 18, they did do a tip-a-cop fundraiser at the Longhorn State House. Our police departments, I'm sorry I couldn't get by, and I want to congratulate them for continuing all their work in the community for charity. Eric Hogland will have a... Who is a chair of our Park and Rec Citizens Advisory Committee, as a reporter last meeting, passed away. They will have a memorial service for him on February 8 at the Laurel Presbyterian Church from 2:00 p.m. until 3:00 p.m. And that concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move to Agenda Item Seven, the general public hearing. I'll open a general public hearing at 7:40. I have a few people signed up to speak. I'll start with Karen Lubinecki. Karen, if you'll give your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Karen Lubinecki, 421 Prince George Street. I'm here on behalf of the Laurel Historical Society. Just a couple of things. First of all, I'm here just to thank the city again for all the work it does with the historical society. We've been an operating museum since 1996, and even before that time, the city has been just a terrific partner for us, and we just want to say thank you again. It's been a really good partnership, and we appreciate it. We have a few things coming up, and we thought it would be nice to regularly brief you on what it is we're doing. On February 9, I hope people will put on their calendar. Our new exhibit is opening. It's called Lost and Found Laurel, and that'll be from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on the 9th of February. Those of you who may follow the Lost Laurel Facebook page, which has more than 3,000 followers, so I think there's quite a few of them, will be familiar with Rich Friend, who is the person who runs that, and he's been working very closely with us on developing this exhibit, so I think it's going to be something really special. In addition, Rich has offered to give us his first two books. He's publishing a book on Lost Laurel to raffle off on the 9th, which is a really nice gesture on his part. So if you come on February 9, you may have an opportunity to participate in the raffle and get one of those first two books. Something else that we're doing, we've been doing a lot of talks with the Laurel Senior Beltsville Center, and we've become kind of their history. Once a month, we do a program with them. And on February 21, we'll be doing a program on African-American history in Laurel. That'll be at 10 o'clock on Friday, the 21st. Unfortunately, you do have to be 50 or older to come to this program, but I'm sure there's a few people in the audience viewing who can do that. And the other thing that I'm hoping people will put on their calendar, we do have an annual gala, and that will be on a night in Lost Laurel. We have a theme this year, and that will be on Saturday, April 12. And one final thing is, we talked about the library, and I don't know if all of you are familiar with the fact that the Laurel Museum is now the home to all the materials from the Laurel Leaders that the library had. We not only have the hardbound copies for many years, which are up in our attic, and people can come and make an appointment to see them. They have to make an appointment to see the leaders. We are in the process of getting them all digitized. There is microfilm so that people will be able to actually come and look at the Laurel Leaders on DVD. So we're very excited about some of that, and again, thank the city for all its help and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. John Lofton. Mr. Lofton, if you'll give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is John Lofton, and I'm at 16111 Gerald Road. I am the director of the God and Government Project, which is an outreach mission of the Institute on the Constitution in Pasadena, Maryland. And the purpose of the project is to remind elected officials that government is ordained by God, and that the first duty of elected officials is to obey God, to apply God's law, to abide by the limits that are set by God to civil government. The 13th chapter of the Book of Romans has traditionally been that part of the scripture that talks about civil government. And I wanted to talk briefly about one article in the Laurel Leader recently that I think is a classic example of something that is not the business of government. And that was an article about raising the minimum wage. In this article, Mary Lehman, a councilperson for the PG County Council and some of her council members, were sitting around, according to this article, checking their email when the subject came up of, what do you think about raising the minimum wage? And they thought it was a great idea, and they got a bunch of co-sponsors, and they have legislation now to raise the minimum wage. Well, Mary Lehman says in this article, we believe that our lowest earners need to earn more. Well, that's wonderful to believe that. What is not wonderful is when the power of government is used to mandate the salaries that are to be paid by private businesses. The government, no government, state, federal, or national, or local, has any authority to tell a private business what that business will pay its employees. And in this article, Ginger Reeves, who owns the Toucon Taco, said that, well, she didn't know where she would get the money to pay an extra wage. She said that an increase in the minimum wage would cut down on hiring, that it would reduce the number of people she could hire, and probably could cost her to have to raise prices. So that's one example of something that's none of the government's business. Government funds are not the private piggy bank of elected officials to spend wherever they think that money ought to be spent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lofton. I have no one else signed up to speak on the general public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the general public hearing at 7:40.
Seeing no one, I'll close the general public hearing at 7:47. Agenda Item Nine is the introduction to first public hearing on ordinance number 1791, in ordinance to amend the City of Laurel Employee Retirement Plan to stipulate that the mortality table and interest rate from IRS Code 417 apply to IRS Code 415. I've read the title into the record for the first reading, I'll open the public hearing at 7:47, Mr. Green.
The ordinance before you is a very technical amendment, as you might guess from the title. It is, we're asking for this amendment in preparation for submitting the plans to the IRS for a determination letter and it was discussed in some detail in our work session earlier this evening and we would ask for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Counsel, this is an item that we have decided to suspend the rules, or find it necessary, I should say, to suspend the rules, so I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll move to suspend the rules on this ordinance number 1791.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Les.
Conversation?
Any discussion on that?
She seconded.
Who she?
Valerie.
No, it was Mike.
Oh, Mike, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Well, didn't we agree that we would take all four of them at one time?
No, we have to take them individually.
Take them separately, okay.
Yes. Ms. Brown, please call a roll.
Lou. Ms. McCrery?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Now, Councilman Ricks, would you be willing to?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Brown, please call for the vote.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. McCrery?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mau?
I'll concur with counsel.
Agenda Item 10 is introduction to first public hearing on ordinance number 1792, in ordinance to amend the City of Laurel Police Retirement Plan to stipulate that the mortality table and interest rate from IRS Code 417 apply to IRS Code 415. This is the same plan, you want to just?
Motion to suspend the rules. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This is the same amendment to apply to the police retirement plan that you just adopted for the employees.
Okay, thank you and we will, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules, Councilman Ricks.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Les, any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Brown, please call a roll.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. McCrery?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mau?
I'll concur with counsel.
Agenda Item 11 is the introduction to first public hearing on ordinance number 1793, in ordinance to amend the City of Laurel Employee Retirement Plan to provide technical amendments required by the IRS for the 2013 determination letter. Mr. Green?
The city submitted our plans for a determination letter five years ago and we received our, that letter in November of 2013, it required certain amendments of a very technical nature and that is what's before you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I'll open a public hearing at 7:51, I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item, is there anyone who'd like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and counsel, I'll entertain a motion to suspend. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Brown, please call a roll.
Councilmember Ricks?
Aye.
Councilmember Les?
Yes.
Councilmember McCrery?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Smalls?
Now, I'll entertain a motion on the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
We have Councilwoman McCrery and Councilwoman Nicholas, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call for the vote.
Ms. McCrery?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Now, I'll entertain a motion and a second on the amendment.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Brown, please call a roll.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. McCrery?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mau?
I'll concur with counsel.
And Agenda Item 12 is the introduction to first public hearing on ordinance number 1794, in ordinance to amend the City of Laurel Police Retirement Plan to provide technical amendments required by the IRS for the 2013 determination letter. I read the title into the record for the first reading, Mr. Green.
Once again, this is the, this is the amendment that would provide the same language as you just approved for the employee plan and put it into the police retirement plan as well.
Thank you. I'll open a public hearing at 7:53, I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item, is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:53 and counsel, entertain a motion to suspend.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Brown, please call a roll.
Ms. McCrery?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mau?
I'll concur with counsel.
That concludes our agenda, is there any other business to come before the mayor and city council?
Just one item.
Yes.
The budget meetings that you mentioned in your report, I think they have to call the county executive's office to speak and get signed up a week in advance.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.